Counselor Box, are you ready? Good morning and welcome to City Hall. Mayor Cornet and two of our colleagues, Councilman Pettis and Councilman McAtee, are at the National League of Cities today, so we're a little bit short-staffed, but I think we can handle the agenda. So, I'd like to go ahead and begin with the invocation. Reverend Ray Douglas is here from the Greater Mount Olive Baptist Church. If you'll offer a prayer, and I'd like to ask Councilman Pete White if you'd lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance following. One, please stand.
Let us pray. Oh God, our Father, we thank you for your grace and your mercy. We pray your choice blessings on our city, our citizens, our leadership, but we pray right now that you give wisdom and guidance to our leaderships, that they make right decisions for the economic prosperity and justice and righteousness for all the residents of our city. We ask this in the name of your son. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America. This is a republic on which it stands, one nation under God and individual with liberty and justice for all.
So, one of the wonderful things that we get to do every month is honor a teacher for great accomplishments within the Oklahoma City I-89 district and all of the 24 districts that make up the Oklahoma City metropolitan areas. And today, it's my pleasure to ask Paula McCullough to please come forward, if you would. Paula is our Teacher of the Month. She is with the Mustang Public Schools, and this is an honor that's joined by the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. The clerk, I believe, has a resolution. If you'd read that for us, Frances.
Whereas Paula McCullough has been named Teacher of the Month for March 2015 by Mustang Public Schools and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. Whereas Paula has been an educator for 30 years, all at Lakeoma Elementary and Mustang Public Schools. Whereas Paula received her bachelor's degree in early childhood education and elementary education from Southern Nazarene University. Her master's degree in special education from Southwestern Oklahoma State University. Her reading specialist degree from the University of Oklahoma. And she is a national board-certified teacher in the area of early childhood. Whereas, over the course of her career, Paula has been recognized numerous times for her work as an educator, including Mustang Teacher of the Year, three-time Lakeoma Teacher of the Year, the Instructional Excellence in Education Award from the Oklahoma Education Association, and the All USA Teacher Team by USA Today. Whereas, resolute in her commitment to achieving her goals in education, Paula was named to several noteworthy lists. Who's who among students in American universities and colleges? Who's who in American education? Who's who of American women? And who's who among American teachers? Whereas Paula has been active in continued professional development of teachers and the educational organizations established to improve resources and relationships between two teachers, students, and parents. Whereas Paula's work was published in the Oklahoma Reader, "Put a Stop to Illiteracy and in the Fundamentals of Early Childhood Education: Home and School, an Unbeatable Team. Together Everyone Achieves More." Now therefore, be resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Paula McCullough on her selection as the March 2015 Teacher of the Month by Mustang Public Schools and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Let's give her a big round of applause. Thank you so much. Paula, this is one of those things, it's a resolution and it requires a vote, so is there a motion to?
(Inaudible).
Second? Everybody cast your votes? And look at that, it passed unanimously. So, would you like to say a couple of words?
(Inaudible).
Are you sure? Well, this is a tremendous list of accomplishments and 30 years of teaching. You know, we're all so proud that Oklahoma is a leader in the nation in early childhood education, and a focus on reading is one of those things that makes a difference for a child for the rest of their lives, so.
(Inaudible).
Great. Well, you told me earlier you get to work with kindergarteners all the way up through the fourth grade, and what a wonderful joy that is to go into the classroom every day, I know. So, thank you so much for all that you do. We really appreciate and enjoy your lunch at Rotary today. I know your principal's gonna be with you, and it'll be a really nice afternoon. Thank you. One more round of applause as I head back up here. Thank you. Ready? There's just one other thing I'd like to mention from the office of the mayor. I'd like to recognize and offer condolences to the family of former police chief David McBride. His services are actually today at 2:30 PM at the Rest Haven Memory Gardens at 500 Southwest 104th Street. Served us very ably. I thought Chief City's quote in the paper today was really nice about always thinking out of the box, before it was time to really think out of the box. So, we offer our condolences, and as we do often, maybe we could bring back a resolution for the family at some point. Thank you very much. Onto item four of our agenda, the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item A is to receive the journal, and item B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for February 24th of 2015.
(Inaudible).
Is there a second?
(Inaudible).
If I can cast your votes, and the journals pass unanimously. Moving on to item five, we have a couple of revocable permits today. The first is Friends of Multi-Sport to hold the Go Girl Run U.S. Track and Field Sanctions Event on West Sheridan between Hudson and Robinson on March 22nd.
Be happy to answer any questions you'd like.
Why don't you just tell us a little bit about it?
You bet. March 22nd, we will start at Sheridan and Hudson, run through nine of Oklahoma City's districts, who are all helpful in sponsoring each of those aid stations. Although it's a women's half marathon and 5K, there is a couples' run, so we are including the males at some point. We're enjoying great registration at this point, about 1,300, and expect to have about 2,000 by race day.
Wonderful. Corey, I do need your name and address for the record.
You bet. David Wood, and it's 6012 Marlow Lane.
Great. Thank you very much.
You bet.
This event is in Ward 2, 6, and 7. Ed, do you have a?
(Inaudible).
Great. Cast your votes, and it passes unanimously.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Good luck with the race. Item 5-2 is the Oklahoma Heritage Association to hold the Oklahoma Heritage Land Run. Good morning. We'll need your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. I'm Corey Mills, and I am, my address is 1400 Clauston Drive. And the Oklahoma Heritage Land Run, 10K, 5K, and 1-mile fundraiser starts as annual fundraiser for the Oklahoma Heritage Association's team board. Runner registrations and vendors will be set up in the parking lot of the Gaylord Pickens Museum at the corner of Northwest 13th and Chertel. The 10K and 5K starts at 8:30 AM on Saturday, March 28th. And the 1-mile fundraiser will begin at 8:00 AM. The award ceremony will be held at the parking lot of the museum immediately following the race. DG Productions is producing the race for us. Oklahoma City Police Officers will be providing any type of traffic control in the air through the Police Athletic League, so.
And what size crowd are you expecting?
We, hopefully, about 200, 250, so it grows every year, so we hope it keeps on growing.
Great. Well, your team board does a really great job of putting on these events, so congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Do I have a motion?
(Inaudible).
Second? Cast your votes, and that passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Item 5-3 is the YMCA of Greater Oklahoma City to hold the Early Wine Dash on March 22nd. And it looks like we have Paul here to talk to us. Paul, name and address, if you don't mind, for the record.
Paul Uckert, Early Wine Park YMCA, 11801 South May, Oklahoma City, 73170. This is our sixth annual Early Wine Dash. Benefits proceed to Early Wine Park YMCA. We primarily around the Early Wine Park down 119th and South May.
Perfect. David, this is Award 5.
Yes. And it's one of the few we have out there, so I'm really looking forward to it. Hopefully, I can, I don't think I'll be able to participate, but I hope to be able to be out there cheering everybody on, so I would like to make a motion for approval.
Second? Cast your votes, and that passes unanimously as well. Good luck.
Thank you.
So, moving on to item six is a request for uncontested continuances. Manager?
We have a few this morning, starting on page 12, under item 9C1. Item A, 1412 East Park, we asked if that be stricken, we need to re-notify. And item B, 1808 East Park, we need to strike, we need to re-notify on that. And then moving to page 13, under item 9D1. Item C, 8805 Hillcrest Drive, we need to strike, the owner has secured. And then under item 9E1. Item D, 1412 East Park, we asked if that be stricken, we need to re-notify. Item E, 1808 East Park, we need to strike, that needs to be re-notified. And then item J, 8805 Hillcrest, we asked if that be stricken, the owner has secured.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll go ahead and recess the council meeting and reconvene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. We have three items today.
(Inaudible).
Second? All right, cast your votes, and the Municipal Facilities Authority items pass unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. And there are two items.
(Inaudible).
Second?
I have a question, Madam Vice Mayor.
Great.
On PPA, it says it was reviewed by the Finance Department. Do we have any idea what the financial impact might be on our city and, secondly, on the performing groups?
That's being evaluated. There's a working group that's been working with the Civic Center on this. There's been a number of meetings, they've gone through a lot of.
It's been a controversial project, and I think finally everybody's bought into it. But I was curious if, in our financial analysis, if we did any estimates of what the impact on the city might be, and then on the performing groups.
I can't answer that specifically. I know that was looked at because of the fact that we looked at the cost for it, Ticketmaster was doing it up in Tulsa versus what the ultimate cost would be here. Councilor, I'd be happy to get back with you on some specifics on that.
I appreciate it. It's just a minor question I hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Didn't we already vote on that?
We have a motion.
We have a motion in a second?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously. We'll go ahead and reconvene the PPA and adjourn and convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. We have just the claims and payroll today.
(Inaudible).
Second?
And the claims and payroll is approved. We'll adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. Second? Great. And are there individual items for consideration today?
Your Honor, I have a couple of minor questions. One on number N, 7N, and one on number 7, Q1 and Q2.
Anybody else?
7S1.
7S1, Ed?
Mm-hmm.
All ready. Pat, do you want to go ahead and get us started on 7N?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just had a question. A million-dollar figure we've used for several years for this project, and I wonder how much work we intend to have, we expect to have done for that million dollars? Because I'm sure their prices have gone up some in the years we've had this number in the contract.
Eric.
Great.
My question, Eric, was about on this project, we have used SAC, I think it is.
This is Marc's, this is Marc's issue, not in this area. But Marc will be in a minute, he's in the back.
It's actually base repair for water utility cuts.
Oh, it is?
So, I think I can answer the question.
Okay. You know, we've used a million dollars as our number in there for several years now. Do we expect to get significantly less work done for that million dollars than we did in previous years?
I don't think we do at this time. I mean, the million dollars has just been a budget, and it's just anticipating costs. But I mean, I don't know that we've increased it in recent years, and I don't see a need to increase it anytime soon.
Thank you, Your Honor.
And then, Pat, you had also item Q.
Q1 and 2 were granting a few, what's the term, avionics easements? And we list all the reasons we're gonna do it. We don't talk about public safety, and I think that ought to be included in our list of reasons for doing these sort of things.
Good morning, Mark Cranberg, Airport's Department. Yes, sir. Your question again, I'm sorry.
Well, we talk about several items we're going to accomplish or aim to accomplish in this particular process, and we don't use public safety as one of those. And I would suggest public safety is an important consideration in that area.
We can add that to our memos to address that in the future, if you like.
I think it would be, if we could add it, I think it would be worthwhile putting it on.
Be happy to do it.
Thank you, Mark. Ed, you wanted to talk about item S1.
Brent, can I ask you about, this is, so we're approving a $550,000 allocation of TIF number 2 funds for the Criterion Events Center project. $350,000 is assistance and development financing. What is that?
The assistance and development finance will be provided them over the balance of the life of the TIF essentially, as they create additional value and their taxes increase. A portion of that increase in taxes will be provided them in the form of assistance and development financing to help them with cash flow. As we evaluated their project, they needed some assistance with their cash flow as a result of the additional million dollars worth of improvements that they had to do after going through all of the review processes.
So, I mean, how do you, what's the process? Are there written parameters for how that would be dispersed, or how you might apply for assistance in developing, development financing of that?
It's normally, there's not any per se written down, but we, we sit down with each individual developer and look at, every deal's a little different, whether it's in how they, and how they finance it, how they structure it, what their cash flows are like. And we try to look, we dig into their performance and look at what their, what their revenue stream is, what their expenses are, and we evaluate all of that. And then we come back and find, in this case, we sit down with the Criterion, with, they brought their banker to the table, which was very helpful to us, because he had to have certain debt coverage requirements for him to loan him the money. And we also, and we try to keep returns at a reasonable amount to make the deal happen. And so, we tried to help, and that was a very good exercise for us, to have him sitting at the table. And I can tell you, as we were evaluating, finalizing it, I picked up the phone and called the banker and said, okay, how does this work, and what can you live with? Our committee is leaning this way, and at the end of the day, I think we came up with a good solution to help this project.
You know, from a larger picture, generally, as we look at it, it's generally more expensive, not always, but generally more expensive to do development downtown for a number of reasons. Primarily, it's structured parking. When we come in there, if you're, if you're taking a look at doing a certain use, and you're doing it downtown, you have to put in structured parking, as opposed to doing it out in an area further away from downtown where there's structured parking, generally there's a gap there in the overall performance. And so, historically, we've been filling that gap to make it a profitable situation. We always look at the performance and decide what, what their investment's gonna be, what we think is a reasonable, rents are gonna be, they're gonna get out of it. And, you know, if there's a gap, or if there's a reasonable return on their investment, then we, we don't participate. We say no to a number of people, a lot of people, to come in and do this. Sometimes, because of what they're trying to do, there's a gap in that, and because of that, we try to fill that gap, so that development will go downtown as opposed to going elsewhere.
When you say, when you say we're meeting with them and we're looking at this and we're, who's we?
We have an internal committee that consists of myself, Ian Colgan from the Planning Department. We have council there, either Amanda Carpenter or Wiley Williams. We have representatives from the Public Works Department. Jim Lee Wellen typically sits on that committee with us. Kathy O'Connor from the Alliance is on that committee. And we evaluate projects from a planning perspective, from a financial perspective, from a public works perspective, to look at it from all these different angles, because they come to us with an infrastructure issue, that's what's causing the, this is the deterrent from doing the development, or they come at us from a financial standpoint. And so, we have this committee, and what we do is we evaluate it, the developer comes in and makes the pitch, provides all the data, we follow up with questions, and then from there, we make a recommendation to the city manager.
So, anyone who comes forward with a TIF proposal would meet with all those people? Would meet with all of them?
Initially, would either meet with me or Kathy O'Connor, and then we would set up a time to bring the entire group, it's called the TIF Advisory Panel, would bring them together, and they would, we would sit and evaluate the projects.
Would, would every proposal get to the advisory panel, or could it be, what if you deemed it didn't have merit? Would it get to the panel every time, or?
Potentially, on initial interviews, we may, we may say that this doesn't appear to have merit, and, you know, and sometimes they don't come in with a full proposal laid out, and we may indicate that, you know, this has got some negatives and it may not make it, which may help them in their decisions, if they want to put more resources in this effort or not. But if anybody pushed it, if anybody says, I want to, I want to take to that committee, we certainly take to that committee.
Is there, so is that recorded? If somebody comes to you and meets with you, and then it, and then it doesn't make it to the panel?
Recorded? Not necessarily. We, there, we have just meetings, and we sit down with them and talk to them, but it's not a formal, where we track minutes and all of that of the meeting, we don't do that.
Let me ask you about specific, we're gonna talk at the end of the meeting about the Convention Center, the RICO Group. Have they come forward with TIF proposals?
They provided some requests to us, but we're still in the infancy stage, I would say, of that.
No, no, of anything? Midtown?
Yes.
Anything?
Yes.
And they've been approved for TIF funds?
They've been approved, they've been denied.
When were they denied?
Eight weeks ago? Ten months ago? Somewhere in the last 90 days, I would say.
Is that the first time they've been denied?
They were, first time they've been totally denied. You know, most people come in with an ask, and they don't get what they ask for, it's a lesser amount.
Right.
We go through it, and so they, but so we've, we've certainly negotiated down some of their requests, but that may be the only one that they've totally denied on.
Let me ask you, were you ever given a proposal or asked about TIF financing for the bus station?
No.
No. How about, or any of the buildings that the 499 Sheridan Development?
No, sir.
But, but anyone? Okay, thanks.
I do think it's really important, though, to bring out the point that these aren't requests that are driven by the city. These are requests that are driven by developers. And anybody that's got a project on the table, regardless of where the project is, as long as it fits with inside the TIF district, can come talk to us about one.
Actually, Brent, I have another question. So, when, when they come to you with a proposal and they have a pro forma?
Mm-hmm.
Who's reviewing the pro forma? Is there an independent review of that pro forma, or is it just, who reviews it?
At the end of the day, it's myself along with Ian Colgan. We go through and evaluate, prior to him coming here, it was basically me, but we worked together on that and evaluate the performance. We look at, are their rents reasonable? Are they too high, too low? Are, were their expenses, you know, are they reasonable? We look at their financing terms, are they, I mean, we give it the reasonable test, we try to evaluate and say, well, the market is saying this, and you're saying this, and we, we drill down on the details to.
But, so you, you just indicated to me that it was helpful to you to have a banker give some, give some input. Is there any time where these deals get complicated enough that it might help to have an independent review, or some third party say, the numbers in this pro forma look reasonable, or that maybe they're a little bit of a stretch in this area? Would it ever be helpful to have an independent review of those pro formas?
It could be. We haven't gotten to that point.
Right.
You know, Brent's very good at it, he, this is kind of what he does. I personally look at a number of them that come in, not everyone, but I look at a number of them that come down the line, but yeah, there could be that point where that could, that could be held on.
The, the point was made in the, on the bus station at the DDRC that even with TIF allocations, that was not economically viable. Did anyone from the DDRC ask you if you thought that would be economically viable with or without, or with TIF funds?
I have not had any.
Or what kind of TIF funds might be available?
No.
Thank you.
I think we have a motion in a second on the, on the consent docket. Ready, cast your votes? Consent docket passes unanimously. Moving on to the concurrence docket, we had several items with the Water Utilities Trust and a couple of Maps for Kids items. Are there any specific questions? All ready? Cast your votes, and the concurrence docket passes unanimously. Moving on to item 9, these are items requiring separate votes. Item 9A is an ordinance on final hearing. This is an ABC issue, restaurant in a PUD at 14221 North Pennsylvania Avenue in Ward 8.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a Mexican restaurant's being built out there in an area where there are several restaurants that typically have ABC license. And Frances, anybody sign up to speak on this one? It was approved by the Planning Commission, I would move approval.
Is there a second? Great. Cast your votes, and that item passes unanimously.
Your Honor, I'd like to ask for emergency on this one to get it.
Pat, I'm sorry, but we don't have enough people to pass the emergency.
Seven. Okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that. We're short, short staffed today. Item 9-2, PUD 1570 at 16500 South Western. This would go from AA Agricultural District to PUD 1570, and this is a Ward 5 issue. David?
Thank you, Your Honor. This item was approved unanimously by the Planning Commission. There were no protests, and I personally am really looking forward to continued development along Southwestern Avenue now that we've gotten it opened to Four Lane Road all the way to Norman. Frances, is there anyone here to speak on this? Okay. Well, I would recommend approval of this.
Second?
I can cast your votes, please, and that item passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 9-3 is SPUD 799. This is at 3007 Southwest 59th Street. It would go from C3 Community Commercial to a simplified plan unit development in Ward 3.
Larry asked me to.
Thank you, James.
But since he's not here, is applicant here? Yeah. I think it'd probably be good to just hear a little brief explanation of what the spud entails, since Larry's not here.
Mark Grubbs, 1819 South Morton Road, on behalf of the applicant. Property's currently is on C3, and the spud was used to zone it for a single use, SPUD to support a mini-storage facility. We agreed to all the TEs, and we had asked for your approval.
There weren't any protesters, from my knowledge, and it was voted on 6 to 1 at the Planning Commission, so unless anybody has any questions, I move for approval.
Second?
Second? All right. Cast your votes, and that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Item 9-4, SPUD 800. This is at 1725 Northwest 16th Street, and this is a change from the Neighborhood Business and Urban Design District to a spud 800, and this is actually in Ward 6. This is a request brought to us by Lyric Theater.
Move the item?
Second? Thank you. Cast your votes, and that passes unanimously. Item number 9-5 is on North May Avenue, 12100 North May, and this would be a change in zoning from C3 Community Commercial to a simplified, simplified pan unit development district, spud 801. And Ed, this is in Ward 2.
It is, and it's also borders Ward 8, and I know Pat's gotten some, some feedback from the neighborhoods, as have I, and it's controversial, it's certainly outside the box, putting a nightclub in a shopping mall. I met with the applicants some time ago. I know them because they run a similar club next to where I live. And they came to me, and I said, you have to go talk to the neighborhoods. Don't just restrict it to the 300 feet, you have to go talk to them. And so, I think they did that. They had a couple of public meetings. Not everybody that was, certainly could have been there, got there, but they had not one, but two meetings. I've made it clear that meeting with them before the application's not enough, they have to continue to go back to those Neighborhood Association meetings. They have to continue to talk to the neighborhoods, they have to have zero tolerance for any kind of adverse impacts to the, to the neighborhood. I think what, Michael, why don't you just talk for a second about what steps you're taking to protect the public safety?
Hello?
Good morning. We will need your name and address for the record, please.
Name's Michael Seke, 6608 Northwestern Avenue, number 451, Oklahoma City. And one of the things that we're doing to, you know, increase the public safety is that we're using a very high-tech security system. It's a system designed by Servol Biometrics, and basically, we And one of the things that we're doing to increase the public safety is that we're using a very high-tech security system. It's a system designed by Servol Biometrics. And basically, when you walk into the nightclub establishment, you provide, it's a computer kiosk with a camera on it and a flatbed scanner, and you provide the person your ID, and it's put on the scanner, and it's scanned, and it goes through the same database that the TSA uses to verify identifications at the airport. What this does is to make sure that the person's obviously legal of age and that it's also not an altered ID. The system then captures a picture of the person who gave the ID, which is stored. So the next time that the ID comes through the club, the pictures are put side by side to make sure that it's consistently the same people or using the same ID, and it's not being shared, which is one of the things you do to keep underage drinkers out of the club, that you can't use your sister's ID or brother's ID if somebody looks similar to you. It also captures all the information that you're legally allowed to keep on the system. So if there is a problem within the nightclub, we're able to, you know, somebody in a yellow shirt, you know, does something they're not supposed to do, we're able to scan through the pictures at the beginning of the night with the security footage, and we can provide the Oklahoma City Police Department with the details of contact information from the ID of the person who caused the problem. And the other things it does, it serves as a very large deterrent, because anybody who's going to go to a club that's had a history of causing problems, or knows that they may be doing something they shouldn't, are not going to go somewhere where they know for sure they can be identified. And that's, you know, that's one of the main things that we're doing that's different above and beyond what other nightclubs in the city are doing, to not ensure the safety of the people who are in the club, but also the people in the surrounding areas as well.
Can I ask about security?
We will provide, obviously, security within the club and also by our lease through Morris Properties. We have to provide a security officer in the mall and also one in the parking lot when we're operating as a nightclub. So in addition to, you know, onboard mall security, we're going to have to put our own security guard in the property of the mall, also one out in the parking lot.
And do you have a nuisance clause in your lease?
And also in our news, we have a nuisance clause, that if we have incidents of repeated nature, that we can have our lease revoked by the landlord.
Michael, if I could just ask a question. You said that while, when you're operating as a nightclub, you need additional security. Could you just run through a little template about what the operation actually looks like? What hours you're open? Do you serve food?
Okay, yeah, during the week, Monday through Wednesday, we'll be open from four to 12. We'll be operating more as a lounge. We actually have a carton that will go across the club and close off the dance floor part of it, and it will just be, you know, booths and seating and chairs of that nature. We have a small kitchen in it. We'll provide some light fare food as well. It's not a full-blown kitchen where you can premiere meals and things, but very nice appetizers and things of that nature. On Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night, it'll be operating more as the actual nightclub, which will be, we'll cocktail lounge from four, but nightclub hours usually start around eight, and then eight until 2:00, when the doors have to be locked. We turn on the lights at 1:30, gives a chance everybody, you know, to tab out and finish up and then leave the place, because by ABLE Commission, you have, the door has to be locked at two, not just quit serving at two. So that's, the hours of operation will be running.
Great.
So, go ahead, Pat.
Well, I've had a number of emails and calls from the people who live in Quail Creek, and they've got some concerns, and I would wonder if the councilman from Ward two would agree to defer this for a week, if that's acceptable to the applicants, get with the people in Quail Creek and make sure that their concerns are addressed.
May I address that?
And I'm sorry.
My name is Steve McElhob with the Dairy Berry Naffy Law Firm, 4800 North Lincoln Boulevard, Oklahoma City. Councilman Ryan, we'd be pleased to do that. We've met with them on two different occasions. We met with the Quail Creek Homeowners Association Board on February 10th, and then they sent an email out to all of their members, and we met with the members who were concerned who showed up at the Quail Creek Golf and Country Club on February 16th. So just, I was making sure you were aware of that.
Appreciate the work you've done, and we'd be glad to prepare you a list of people who've sent us emails with their specific objections in it. You might be able to contact those people and relieve their concerns. Would a week's delay hurt your project significantly?
That'd be fine, sir, yes.
Would you agree to that?
I won't be here next week, but, I mean, if the applicants.
Okay, do we have anybody signed up to talk on this? Because initially, the Quail Creek people indicated they would be here to protest the application. Okay, so they obviously didn't, weren't that concerned, but if you could defer it one week, I think it would be helpful to give applicants a chance to calm their concerns in that way, we would remove a significant, I think, obstacle to this being approved.
So for one week?
One week, yeah.
Okay.
Which is what, the 17th, Mark?
Seventeenth.
Okay, so I won't be here either that week.
Do you want to say two weeks?
Well, it has to be the first meeting in April before I'll get back. I'm leaving the country for a week.
I had a question about the nuisance clause. Does nuisance, excessive noise, is that, does that fall under that? Like, I'm just wondering, how are you going to contain noise? Has that been a concern of people? I don't even know.
No, no, noise is the, it's inside the mall, so.
Right.
The sound of the club, you won't be able to hear the neighbors, you know, it's also surrounded by a large parking buffer zone. We'll utilize the entrance on the west side of the mall to come into our property. Our piece was actually, it's on the backside of the mall. We'll be parked, there's an entrance from the south end, come up just a little bit on the west side, there's an entrance that goes in the mall right there, so that'll be interesting. So most of the parking will be on the May Avenue side of the mall.
So really, the nuisance is mostly criminal activity? Is that what they do?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
So I guess the question is, do we have a motion to defer for?
I would move we defer if it's.
Ed, do you want to do a week or two weeks so that you'd be back?
A week is fine, yeah, that's.
Well, I won't be here.
Okay.
I would prefer both of you to be here if that's.
I won't be here till the first meeting in April.
Is that okay?
First of April?
April 7th, I think.
Is that okay?
Month from now.
You may have to be dealing with my successor. I'm not sure exactly how that works.
Two weeks is fine.
Pat, what if we went ahead and voted and they committed to meeting with?
We could do that. I just think that the people in Quail Creek are genuinely concerned, and we could give you a list of people who sent us emails or give you copies of their emails, so you'll know what their concerns are.
We will make sure, if you go ahead and go, we will make sure and meet with them and report back to you to verify that we did.
I do think that the way this is starting, I mean, I live, they're next to the Roberts Crest neighborhood. I think if anything, it would be worse where we are. I think a lot of the same clientele are going to follow them. Michael's been doing this for 20 years. I think everybody's going to leave this club and go on 122nd or May. I'm not, I'm not sure if the issue's, is the issue traffic?
The issue is they're concerned about the safety primarily, and the security within the parking lot, I think, is an important point to make to these people who've been complaining. And they're concerned about safety within the mall, and you're going to have a security officer in that mall as well. Because they talk about, one of the things they are concerned about is attending the movie theater that's in the mall right now. It's a discount theater, but it's very popular, particularly with kids, grandparents and kids, and I think it, their fears may not be founded properly, but I do think that they are concerned that we could address. Applicants seem to have covered those bases particularly well.
Pat, I want to, I mean, passing the Planning Commission unanimously, and nobody's shown up to speak today. I want to move for approval, but everybody's clear that we have an understanding that it doesn't end today, that you continue to meet with the neighborhoods, that you meet with everybody, that Pat can give you the names, that you continue to meet with the Quail Creek neighborhood, and that you continue to win them over and allay any fears of the neighborhoods. So with that, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Second, all right. Cast your votes, and it passes five to one.
Thank you, Ed. Thank you.
Item nine six is SPOD 12, 802. This is 177621 South Pennsylvania. The zoning change would be from 02 General Office District to SPOD 802 Simplified Planned Unit Development in Ward five. David?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have the applicant here, and Francis, do we have anyone here signed up to speak? Okay. Dennis, if we could just have a quick exchange. This is an area, just to give everybody some background, Pennsylvania Avenue between Southwest 74th or I-240, South to 89th, continues to become more and more commercial, especially the closer you get to I-240. This happens to be an area very close to I-240, and they're requesting a change from office designation to a SPUD that would allow for retail. And Dennis, it's my understanding, there was nobody at the Planning Commission to protest, and it was approved unanimously, but there were a couple of letters voicing concerns, and I think your modification to this has addressed those concerns. Would you mind speaking to that?
Yes, sir. Dennis Box, 522 Culcore Drive, on behalf of the applicant. And during the process, both before the Planning Commission and after, the applicant has reached out to the neighbors that sent the letters and has actually provided some modifications to the SPUD and to the site, placed a fence and some curb stoppers that satisfied the neighbor directly to the west, and this will allow him, he's got a tenant that needs some limited retail sales that will allow the building to be used, and we think we've satisfied any of the issues the neighbor's had.
Right, and if I may just point out, specifically, they were concerned if a fast-food restaurant or a convenience store were to locate here, and that's been specifically excluded from the SPUD, so that.
That's great.
Won't be able to happen. And as you've mentioned, you've already taken into consideration just a limited retail-type use of this, so I would recommend approval of this.
Second. Cast your votes. And as a student.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item nine A seven is SPOD 807. This is, address is 801 North Cemetery Road, and it's to go from AA Agricultural to Simplified, simplified, we can't do that today, Simplified Planned Unit Development. This is in Ward C three. James, are you going to?
Yeah. This is another personal storage deal in Ward three. I think that the developer's been working with some neighbors that have been protesting. Has anybody signed up? Okay, so can, is the developer here? Can you come up and talk about how you've been working with the, with the neighbors that were, had some sort of issue with it?
Jason Spencer with Craft and Toll, 214 East Main. So this SPD application is for personal storage. It was recommended for approval by Planning Commission. After Planning Commission, we received some additional concerns from the neighbors, and over the past few weeks, we've been working with those neighbors and with Councilman McAtee to try to resolve their concerns, and we've reached an agreement. Some of the items that we've agreed to, on the north and south, we were original application. The storage buildings were going to be put on the property line, have a zero-foot setback. We've agreed to push that back to 10 feet. On the north, there are some existing trees on the neighboring property that provide good, you know, a good breakup and buffer. From that, we've agreed to make sure and protect those trees throughout construction. And on the south, we've also agreed to plant some additional shrubs on 10-foot centers to help break up the view of the buildings there. On the west, we've agreed to keep some of the existing trees to help screen from that side, and then also we'll fill in the gaps by planting new trees. It'll be a minimum of eight foot in height on 20-foot centers. And then also, we had some agreements on the west about lighting. There's proposed to be a outdoor storage, like RV or automobile storage area back there, so the lighting for that will be positioned in such a way to be directed away from the west property line. And so we've put those revisions into a revised SPOD statement. We'd sent that to both the neighbors and planning staff and Councilman McAtee as well. And so, and that's, you know, where we've gotten, so we've sent in that revised statement, which I believe addresses all their concerns.
Okay. And so that revised one is what we are voting on? Is that correct, Bob?
You need to make a motion to accept the amendments and then.
Make a motion. Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion to accept the amendments.
Ready, cast your votes on that amendment, please, and that passes unanimously.
And then a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Is there a second? Second? And that also passes unanimously.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Item nine B is an ordinance to be introduced today and set for public hearing on March 17th, and then final adoption on March 24th relating to our schedule of fees and other things with our Parks Department. And Doug Cupper, Director of Parks, is here to talk to us about this today.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, City Council. Appreciate the opportunity to come before you today. In studying the fees and schedule of activities for the Parks and Recreation Department over the last nine or 10 months, we discovered a number of fees had not been changed for quite a few years. In the case of our athletic fields, almost 10 years have gone by. We have received, as you all know, we receive complaints about quality of our athletic fields and things along those lines through the seasons that we offer fields, either through our league play or through rental to other leagues. We hope to be able to create the opportunity to start improving those fields, those athletic experiences for our youth, as well as those people that are still of age to play softball and other sports. Also, we have a trouble with competing with our competitors in the aquatics world. They're offering lifeguards a higher rate of pay annually, competition with amusement parks, let alone our own partner group, the YMCA. Our lifeguards have not received a pay increase for over 10 years. We're still paying them less than what the minimum wage is set by the federal government. We hope to be able to increase their salaries, their income, so that the college students can afford to go back to school and things along those lines. I'd be happy to talk about any specific fee increases, but we hope that you understand what we're trying to accomplish with these fee changes, and as it's stated, the final reading will be in two weeks.
Just a quick question, Your Honor. Are the fees intended to recover our costs?
The fees are intended to not recover 100% of our costs, but get their quiet heavily.
In simple terms, I can understand, there's no profit involved in this.
No, sir.
Strictly, we're trying to recover the cost of operating and improve.
That is right. With the cost of chemicals and everything else going up every year, we're trying to keep pace with those and just recover the cost to do business.
Thank you.
David?
Doug, can I ask a question? I'm supportive of your proposal, but you had mentioned that currently, for example, our lifeguards are paid below minimum wage. Is there an exception for students not to be paid the minimum wage?
As I understand it, as I've been schooled over the years, the federal minimum wage is more of a suggested rather than a required rate of pay. We are trying to get to that point where we're in compliance with what is recommended by the federal government.
Well, I would make a suggestion that the city evaluates that if there are any examples of where we're paying below minimum wage, we should increase it to at least the minimum wage.
Yeah, I don't, I know the first in part-time. Full-time, obviously, we don't have that issue, but I'll get with personnel and make sure that we address that. And we did work very heavily with our HR department. They were very helpful in educating us and helping guide this activity.
Well, I understand there's always exceptions to most rules, and so, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Diana, did you want to?
All of our lifeguards are paid minimum wage.
Oh, they are?
Yes.
I stand corrected.
That's good to know. Thanks, Diana. Great, well, today we're just introducing this item and moving it on. Is there a motion to move it forward? Second. Right, cast your votes, and then we'll move that forward to a public hearing scheduled for two weeks away. All ready. Item nine C is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here in the audience today wishing to speak on any item listed under nine C?
Was C, one C continued earlier? It was not. I received a letter and a couple of phone calls about that. It's my understanding, it appeared to me they're working with the city, but if you could comment on that, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, we've met with them. They're going to, we probably will not have to end up doing anything. They've made.
From the letters I got, it appeared that was the situation, but I just, are you, do you represent them?
Yes, my name is Jay Scott. I sent you that letter. My address is 41.
Okay, you understand how the system works. We're going to go ahead and leave it on today, but he'll work with you as long as you're working toward remedying the problem, well, it's going to be, it'll be okay.
Absolutely. Our only concern was is that there's a 30-day mandatory deadline, and I understand everybody is telling us, well, we really don't mean to enforce that, but I understand you are issuing a resolution that mandates, by its very language, that we complete these repairs within 30 days.
Yeah.
And I know everybody says, well, we don't really mean it, but anytime we have a mandated resolution with liens being filed against our property, we are understandably concerned.
Well, mark on your calendar three weeks from today, and if it looks like you have a problem, well, call me or, or, but we, this is the policy. We've had this policy for 20 years at least.
Absolutely.
And I've never known us to not follow what we say. I mean, we're interested in you remediating the problem rather than tearing your buildings down.
Absolutely, and we're willing to work, and we've provided all that to the developers.
I just wanted to be, I don't want to make more out of it than needs to be, but after I got your letter and, and saw it, I thought we ought to at least make sure you understand the situation.
We understand. Thank you.
Okay.
Is there a motion and a second on that?
The item 9B is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anybody in the audience today hoping to speak on any item under 9D1? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
The item 9B is approved.
Take your votes, and those are passed unanimously. Item 9E is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Is there anyone here in the audience today hoping to speak on any item listed under 9E1?
Second.
Second, a motion and a second, and that passes unanimously. Item 9F is a resolution rescinding our prior authorization for the acquisition and use of some real estate for the convention center.
I have a question.
Or five.
In the, Kenny, in the, well, first, first let me just say, I think this is a, really a good opportunity for MAPS 3 to improve upon the outcome and, and maybe to return to some of our roots of, of having planning be more central in, in the decision-making. But Kenny, I want to ask you, in the, in the paperwork accompanying this, it says, "During the litigation, it became apparent that the parties were extremely far apart in their respective valuations of the properties, and that an agreement as to the price of the properties was unlikely." That, that sentence is confusing to me because we're, we're in a condemnation proceeding, which is an adversarial process. Both sides have the right of advocacy. In fact, that's kind of central to the process. It seemed like the time for negotiations had passed. The goal of this court proceeding was a ruling not to come to an agreement, an independent review and determination.
You can always come to an agreement, a settlement agreement during the litigation. So, I mean, it would, it would have been possible to reach an agreement on the price.
Okay. But that's not the goal of the condemnation proceeding that would be done outside. You'd say, we've...
It can be, no, you would, you'd negotiate as part of the case. You can settle a litig, ongoing litigation at any point. So, yeah, you can settle as part, negotiate a settlement as part of the case.
Okay.
Of course, that would have to come back to council for approval.
So I guess what, one question is, it says, "It became apparent that the parties were extremely far apart in their respective valuations." I guess one, one question would be, when did we know that we were far apart in our respective valuations?
We knew, we knew that earlier. There were some other things that we didn't know until later on, which caused us to make the decision on a particular action.
I think I can tell you that in, in late January, we knew we were quite a ways apart, but we didn't think they were challenging the take. Challenging the take was probably, became more evident second week of February, maybe, somewhere in that, that range, third week of February?
Yes, the third week in February. Well, you can, whether you're far apart on the valuation or not, you could always, you could always wait and get the commissioner's award on that and, and then go from there, but the additional aspect of challenging the take, when we became aware of that, then, I mean, that, that had the potential for delaying the project, even if we would have won that.
I mean, one, one thing, just because for egocentric reasons, it affects, I mean, we announced it three hours before the polls closed in an election. If we had disclosed this even 24 hours earlier, 48 hours earlier, certainly a week earlier, it may or may not have impacted city council elections. And so I, I do, I, I do note that that's interesting, the timing, especially when I look at the public, when, not, not, I look, not just for the election reason, but when I look at the public, what's in the osen.net, it looks like they, Rico came and met with you or someone from your office on September 22nd.
Right.
According to what's in the public documents.
But that's before they said they were challenging the take. That didn't happen until, they didn't confirm that until February the 18th, for sure.
Right, but on September, according to the public record, on September 22nd, they indicated that they wanted the streets and alleys included. They wanted, so we knew that they were going to be aggressive in their price evaluation. And then in October, the next month, the city filed not to, instructions not to include the streets and alleys. Kathy O'Connor was subpoenaed on January 16th.
Right.
Chamber of Commerce and the CVB were subpoenaed right after that. The city filed a motion to quash, and we lost on February 27th. So we knew that Kathy O'Connor would have to be deposed in the following week.
That's, that had nothing to do with it. That had nothing to do with, with when it was on the agenda. We found out they were challenging the take 100% for sure on February the 18th. We had received conflicting information prior to that, whether or not they were going to do so. Therefore, on February 18th, we immediately started processing the executive session from March the 3rd. She was out of town on February, the following council meeting of February the 24th.
So we didn't...
I wanted her in the executive session since she was handling the case.
So we delayed it by a week because she was...
Correct.
Okay. Let, let me ask you about the, the Convention Center Hotel. Is there, on, also on that day, we got seven proposals. I'm, I'm hearing that the estimated public assistance sought ranges from 70 to 140 million. I, I don't, I'm just, okay?
I don't know the particulars of the proposals.
Okay, so it's a, it's an enormous public assistance we're looking at. What does the Oklahoma Supreme Court, and we, we had, we had discussions, we talked about the Northeast Tiff, about the Supreme Court case, City of New London versus Kelo, and using eminent domain, taking private property and then giving it to another private individual for economic development. And we had extensive discussions twice from the horseshoe about that Supreme Court case. And we didn't really talk about what the Oklahoma Supreme Court has to say about that. And so I guess what I would ask is, what does the, because my understanding is that the Kelo versus the City of New London said that you could define public use as economic development, but that each state and each state's Supreme Court could define what is and is not public use. So shortly after that, in the Board of County Commissioners of Muskogee County versus Lowry, it seems like the Oklahoma Supreme Court was, was clear that economic development is not unacceptable.
You can condemn, you can use the power of eminent domain to condemn a building site for a public building. So if you're going to have a public building that is going to be owned by the City of Oklahoma City, or potentially a city trust leased to them or owned by the trust, you can condemn and then use that for a purpose that promotes economic development. Economic development is a valid public purpose. We cannot condemn land by eminent domain and convey it to a private party for redevelopment. That's the distinction. But the city can own the building and use it for an economic development purpose.
But what if, what if one of the options for the hotel was for it to be private? I mean, that, we've said that publicly, we discussed that numerous times, that...
The, the building, if we had condemned it by eminent domain, was going to have to be publicly owned. It was going to be a city-owned hotel. That's the only way it could be done.
Okay.
For us to use eminent domain.
So that, so if we were to put a convention center hotel on site that we use eminent domain for, it's going to have to be publicly owned?
Correct.
Yeah, I didn't understand that in the numerous conversations we've had about convention center hotels, I guess, until right now. Because we, it seems...
But you can, the city can acquire land by a negotiated sale, and then it can be conveyed to a private entity for redevelopment, for economic development purpose. It's just the use of eminent domain. You can only condemn it for a public, a building site for a public building. If it's a public building, then the city can use it, they could hire a manager or an operator to manage it and promote economic developments in that, that means, but the city would own the building.
And so what happens if we don't ratify this today? I mean, does the council have any?
If you don't ratify it, if you don't pass this resolution, then we still have resolutions saying you want us to use the power of eminent domain to acquire the property.
Okay.
So if you don't want us to acquire the property, you should pass the resolution.
Is, but would we normally rescind it in court and then have the council?
It's been, yeah, it's been done.
Sure. Okay.
I, I believe that we have a motion and a second on this item. Can we call a question? Everybody cast your votes, please, and it passes unanimously.
Let me make a comment about that. I, I've, I'm, I'm, along with the rest of you, I'm sure you've received comments, either personal or phone calls or emails or, I've not received one comment criticizing what we did. In fact, every comment that I've received has been positive about what we did. In fact, I received a comment from a developer in South Oakland City, Paul Odom, who said, he thought it was such a great idea. He'd give us 30 acres on Southwest 89th and Interstate and I-44 and put in all the, the infrastructure that we needed to do it, just give it to us, because he thought it was such a great idea to, 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 for what we did. He was so, so much in favor of it. But I think that's how we need to look at it. It was, we got ourselves into a situation where if we'd have proceeded, we would have had, we would have been forced, if, if there was to be a hotel, we'd have had to run it. I don't think anybody on the horseshoe, even those that might think the, the, the Convention Center Hotel would be worth the city operating, were not ready to make a commitment on the front side that the city opted to commit to the hotel. And I think that's a positive thing. I think that's a positive comment for us as a council, that we were not willing to put ourselves in a situation where we did not have the option of not running the hotel. And so I think we, it's time to move on, and we've got lots of other sites to look at. This wasn't a slam dunk to move it to the site. There were some of us that were critical of moving the site here in the first place. So it's time to go back and look at where we are. I think the mayor's original first choice was not this site. So I think this is a great step. I mean, I'm really, I heard that part of the beginning of what you said, and I, I wholeheartedly agree that this was a very positive thing to do.
Can I just echo that, Pete? I mean, I, I want to emphasize that I think it's very positive, too, and, and I've heard people reference the Coors Shore South site as the one that the mayor, but the mayor wasn't just looking at some tea leaves or had a vision that that's where it would go. The mayor advocated for it because that's where our planning department studied it and came up with that site. That, I mean, that was part of the Coors Shore study. That was where Russell Klaus advocated for, that was where our planning. And I think it goes to, imagine that we had just followed our planning department, where we'd be today as opposed to, you know, the process that we went down, where despite some comps in the area, like the Vidograph property that's constantly cited, which I, we've talked about the legitimacy of that comp and some other things. I mean, I think it was clear to many that we were never going to be able to afford this site. So I, I think it is exciting for MAPS 3 and for the process that maybe we can return to letting planning have a more central role in studying this and, and looking at options. There were many people, including out-of-state consultants, who kept looking at the, at the maps and saying, what, you're putting a convention center between two parks? I, I mean, it just caused a lot of questions among planners. And so I, I think it's great for MAPS 3, and I think it'll end up making it a much, much better outcome.
And I can assure you the planning is at the table. I've talked with Audrey yesterday, and they've got a meeting tomorrow with David Todd and, and the planning staff, and, and we are going in that direction.
So, so when we're exploring new, new sites, are, are we looking at how the land was acquired in the, in the first, like, say, the Cox Center? I have no idea how that land was acquired to build the Cox Center, but if it was acquired using eminent domain, that would infer that we can't, that if we had a hotel on there, we would have to publicly, we would have to own it publicly. Is that correct?
It was acquired with geo-bond funds, but that's about all I can tell you.
It was.
Yeah. I'm not sure whether it was acquired by eminent domain or whether it was a negotiated sale.
But it was the, it's the only site on the list that's in city, that city-owned, is it not?
That the city completely owns.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, all the rest of them would have to be acquired.
Pieces of them.
Pieces at least would have to be acquired, yeah.
Well, and the benefit of the time is that we have some other sites probably to look at as well. You know, we've certainly seen in other projects that as five years elapses, there are opportunities to look at things that weren't in the mix the first time around.
Right. Since the first time around, obviously, the community has changed, prices have changed, and gosh, we've had a lot of people offering, giving us great opportunities in the last five, six days, so.
No, no shortage of opportunities. It's actually very exciting. Item...
Should I, should I tell Mr. Odom that, that we'll probably take it, that under consideration and just go forward?
Listen, if he, we're taking all conference. We'd be happy to consider it.
I just want to be sure he, he understands that I did the best I could today to, to bring his offer to the table.
Thank him for his generous offer, Pete. Item number 9G is executive session to discuss Chickasaw Nation. I understand we don't need executive session in that. Motion is stricken. Item 9H, I understand we do need executive session to enter and to discuss collective bargaining with the FOP.
IFF, we do.
IFF, sorry. Thank you. All right. We'll move that to executive session. Item 10, are claims recommended for approval? We have two items. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any item under 10A1? Is my, motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Thank you. And those claims are approved. Items from council? Pat, do you want to start it here? And we've got a, the bike ordinance back on final hearing.
Nobody here to comment on it. And this is just a recitation of a state law that will allow a more efficient means of enforcement if indeed we are going to enforce it, we have an opportunity or occasion to enforce it.
Pat, can you talk about the, I've gotten some emails about the price of the ticket is $500?
Yes.
Kind of the maximum. I guess the, the range would be $50 to 500, and this would make it the maximum.
I think it should be even higher than that personally, because it's a very dangerous thing for bicyclists to do is to ride between cars.
So the, the...
I want to do everything we can to discourage that, that kind of thinking, and, but I think the fine is fine.
The legislature put texting and driving at $200?
I don't care what the legislature did, Ed. I, I think we need to protect our citizens who ride bicycles, and this is a way to do it, and I think the fine ought to be significant in order to encourage them not to do it.
So what, so your answer to those who are saying that it sounds punitive to bicyclists that you're doing twice the fee for texting and driving would be what?
Well, I'm trying to protect the bicycle riders from a, from a, what could be a very dangerous situation, and I think the fine ought to be as high as we can legitimately make it.
Only a potential fine of $500.
Mayor and council, Cindy Richard with the city attorney's office. Councilman, the fine of $500 is the maximum for a Class A offense. Otherwise, you'd be talking about a Class B offense, which entitles a person to a jury trial. It can be a much longer, more complex process, and generally, all of our traffic offenses are Class A offenses.
And also, Cindy, again, it can be paid at the counter in municipal court.
That's correct. $500 is the maximum, but, pardon me?
Judge, you can propose a plea or a fine.
If, if the person decided to go to trial or to go in front of a judge to enter a plea, it's possible. If a judge found it to be an egregious offense, considering all the circumstances, he could give a higher fine. I'll tell you that it's common practice to assess a fine that would be the same as what you would go and pay at the counter, but that's not always the case.
Well, I, I think this, this is a clear message to bicyclists. This is a very dangerous thing they're doing, and I think a significant fine will do that, Class A offense.
What, what else do we charge 500 for? What other kind of offenses?
Every Class A offense, except those by which were preempted by state statute to a lower amount, is a $500 offense. But you have a schedule of fines in Chapter 33 that is set by council that says if you go to the counter without appearing in court, and you can only do that... go to the counter without appearing in court, and you can only do this on Class A offenses, then here are the amounts of fines and costs that you will pay. And I can tell you that generally speaking, it's with cost $163 to $185 is usually what it takes to close out a traffic-type offense.
So would that apply to the bicyclists?
Yes.
So a person could go, a person could go to the counter and pay a fine of less than $200 for, with this ordinance in place?
Yes. Fines and costs.
So the 500 is up to 500 as opposed to being a flat 500?
It's up to 500. That's correct.
That's what this ordinance is? That's not what the people that are sending the emails to all of us think. They think it's a flat 500.
Class A offenses are defined by our ordinances to be up to $500, but most of them are not.
So what is this one? This one isn't going to be set at an actual number like a speeding ticket is? There's an actual number for speeding tickets?
It would fall under probably the category of, I don't have Chapter 33 in front of me, but I believe there's another category for Class A offenses, and I believe the fine is about $83 for that other offense, plus about the same amount in court costs. So about $160-some dollars would be the total. If you want to set a different amount, we need to bring the chart from Chapter 33 that establishes the fines to be paid at the counter. We would need to bring an amendment before council for that.
I would feel more comfortable if we had something specific or a little bit more specific as to what especially the first offender could anticipate being responsible for...Mr. Richards, I think you're saying it would, it could be as little as $80-some dollars, and then you double that when you tack on the court costs. Now, are the court costs added if you just go to the window and pay without going to court?
Yes.
Okay. So it sounds like the minimum cost of a first-time offense could be around $160-some dollars?
That will be the cost for even multiple offenses unless the person chooses to go to court, to the judge, to have a trial, then potentially a higher fine could be assessed.
Well, let me ask you a question on the other end, then. Let's say we have an individual who's been fined for doing this several times. Is there any way that you could, that you could fine that person the maximum amount $500, even if that individual's not going to court?
Yes, we could bring the chart out of Chapter 33, and it's an ordinance in Chapter 33 that sets out various fines for various Class A offenses. And you could set an amount if it's a second offense or third offense and that sort of thing. And then it's a matter of tracking, you know, will police and prosecutors be able to track the number of offenses that have come before?
One final question from a mechanical standpoint. If you're riding a bicycle, are you required to maintain some kind of identification like a driver's license?
Not to my knowledge, and not by our ordinances, certainly.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it, but I want to be sure that if the standard fine is not $500, that's the maximum they could get, and they would only get that if they fought it and lost in court, most likely.
That's correct. And most likely, they wouldn't get $500 if they fought it and lost in court. The judges generally will assess the same amount.
But they could.
They could.
Potential for the $500 would be there if they come and, and a judge would have that authority.
And that, the same is true for most all of our Class A offenses. They all could go up to $500 fines, whether it's your car or your bicycle or disorderly conduct, all of those things.
I just have one of my hearing aids on the day, so I wanted to hear it twice to make sure that the same thing is hearing out of both ears.
Yes, sir.
Ready? We have a motion in the second. Cast your votes, please. And that motion passes 5 to 1. Thank you. Pat, do you have anything else?
No. Yeah, I do have a couple of issues that have come up. One is, do we have any way to get to the people who have these collecting items for newspaper at schools and churches? Because there's a couple in my area where the people have got there and they're full and they leave their paper on the bag sometimes around the outside of the thing, and it looks bad, and the bags will tear sometimes and blow all over the neighborhood. It goes to, a lot to the litter thing that Councilman White brought up last week.
Have you seen my desk? It's covered with those little yellow phone books about this thing. Somebody picked up a bunch of them for me during the week.
Good. But I think, but we don't want to have people around and picking up all this paper that's blowing all over town.
The answer is yes. If there's crash, you know, we'll do it on a complaint basis, you know, or if we see them, but we're not, we don't have inspectors out there specifically.
Okay. I think we need to look at some of these locations because they're getting to be a problem with the bags tearing and the winds we have in Oklahoma City of blowing that stuff all over the town. And so I think it would be important to enforce this if we could against the people who are doing it or the people who have the facility out there and they're not emptying it on a regular basis. They're full, they're ill-maintained, they're awful-looking, and some of them are on probably our own right of way. We're allowing it to stand that way.
Pat, are these recycling bins?
The recycling bins for newspapers and paper products, essentially. And they're filled up with all sorts of things that aren't paper. Cardboard, I've seen one that had a broken TV set in it. I hope it was broken anyway, that somebody got mad and threw it away. But anyway, the big problem is people stacking their papers around it and letting the, when they're full and the things are, you know, the tops have been torn off for various reasons. They look really bad, and we need to get to the source of that somehow.
Again, we'd be happy, we'd be happy to look at those specific sites.
Okay. Dennis, not Dennis School, the other school, I'll give you the... And I have a question, too. We had a project on Bluff Creek. We were going to redo some residential streets, and we were going to start in the fall, and nothing's happened yet. Are we got, is that project still on?
I don't know. We'll see if Eric can come in and answer that. I do not know specifics.
Because people out there are getting concerned. We've been promising them that we're going to do this project over and over again, and we're not there yet. So I'd like to get some clearance when we can.
David, while we're waiting for Eric, do you want to?
Yes, thank you. And I'd like to follow up first, a comment that Councilman White made concerning Mr. Odom. And I think he is very sincere about that, and I think it goes, you know, unfortunately, there's a lot of perceptions that business people in general are always trying to make the most money, and that certainly appears to be the case with respect to this particular situation with the property we were considering for the convention center. But Mr. Odom, as well as other individuals that I have talked with, I think do not have that same spirit of trying to take advantage of the city. And I think we'll find some very good opportunities out there as we begin to explore alternatives for the convention center. And Jim, may I ask a question to you? At this point, what do you see the timeframe and the process? Will it be similar to what we experienced back in 2011 to where various alternative sites would be presented back to us to look at? And that may take several months, or could it be a variety of ways?
Obviously, we're going to try to do this in a fairly abbreviated manner, but yes, there'll be evaluations done on multiple sites. Reason I think we can do it a little bit quicker is because a number of these sites have already been evaluated. They need to be updated.
Right.
But, and you know, I think we'll probably take a closer look at the acquisition cost or what we believe they will be as we go forward. I mean, I think we did due diligence last time, but things, things change. Things happen.
Well, and if we do, we still have time, for example. I'm not suggesting this is going to be necessary, but if we did locate the convention center in an area not, say, in the central part of downtown Oklahoma City, we still have time to modify the route of the streetcar, for example, if possibly.
We have not begun construction yet.
Yeah. So, you know, with my interest in developing the area south of I-40, I know that pulls the convention center further away, but, you know, using the Coors Shore Park, the southern section, and pushing it closer to the river, I think it would be a tremendous start to the development that I anticipate will take place at some point in time along the river. But I understand the logistics problems with having a convention center so far removed from the core part of downtown, but I think you could get some very nice views, certainly of the river and activities if we looked to a more southern location. Thank you.
Probably don't have the funds to run the modern streetcar down to 104th and I-44.
Well, at this point.
Okay, at this point.
The...I think most of you have heard that there is a movement in the legislature to give Oklahoma City the authority to start charter schools. I would tell you that over the last three years, along with Councilman Ryan, I primarily devoted my time as a councilman to trying to work the relationship between Oklahoma City Public Schools and the city of Oklahoma City to make, to bring it to a much, to a better situation. And my experience over the last three years has been that if Oklahoma City wanted to start a charter school, we could, the first people we ought to ask would be them as opposed to us having the unilateral authority to do that. I just have no, I think it destroys the relationship that we've spent, Pat and I have worked very hard to try to build that relationship over the last three years. And I think that is very destructive to try to set up a situation where we could go around them and do something that I can tell you right now, they're not, they don't believe is the panacea for public education. And I think they've got very good statistics to show that it isn't, that there are, that there are a number of charter schools that are very successful. There are a number of charter schools that are very unsuccessful, and it has to do with the same thing that goes to having successful public schools. It's community and parental involvement that make a difference. It's not whether they're a charter school or an enterprise school or any of these other schools. The schools that are successful all have tremendous parental and community involvement. That's the key. It's not who's writing the check at the top. That and the idea that all the problems can be solved with a voucher system, I think is a big mistake. I do think it does illustrate something, and in one sense, I'm, I'm, I'm almost pleased to be able to say it. At least the legislature believes there are other agencies or other entities in the state they ought to try to run besides cities. I mean, now they, I think it's come to the point where it's obvious that they think they want to run everything. They get elected to the legislature and they think the federal government's messed up. They also think city government's messed up, that county government's messed up, that the schools are messed up. And they're saying all this with a $611 million budget shortfall that appears to me they're not addressing. I know I'm outside the lines of what makes good sense since we have, since we have to go to them for things. But I think there's a limit. There's a limit. I think it's time that people stood up and said, "Wait a minute. You elect us to do the best we can to run the city, and we don't need to be supervised by the legislature. You elect county commissioners, you elect school board people, you elect federal people." It is not, Oklahoma, 23rd and Lincoln is not the know-all, end-all for intelligence. You don't qualify for Mensa when you get elected. You need to let the local elected officials in every area run what they're, what they're elected to do. I think that we've had a problem with abandoned housing. We've had a problem with smoking. I mean, I think there's a limit. And if I haven't said it before, I want to be sure I'm on record and say that this crosses the line. They've crossed it with us, they've crossed it with the counties, they cross it every day with the federal government. Every day, they spend time trying to do something to the federal government. And I think now the schools, I think it's time that we as a body, or at least us as individuals, stand up and say, "We've had enough." Thank you.
I want to echo all that and say...
At risk of eating, irritating Councilman White, I agree with most of what he said. But I think he said it very well. But I think it can encapsulate, it says, "Local control doesn't end at 23rd and Lincoln." It goes throughout the state, and I think we need to impress legislators.
You only have a couple weeks left.
Say something good about you before I left.
Well, I want to echo all that as well. I mean, and I appreciate the work that Councilman White and Ryan have made in meeting with the school board officials monthly, right? Every month, you reach and try and have a conversation about different issues. And I think that really goes to the heart of what is wrong. I got a call from a school board member yesterday asking me about this bill, Senate Bill 68, which is now on its way to the House, and an email, and what sent to all of us in which it says, you know, "This is really done quietly by design so that people don't get wind of it." And I guess that's, I agree, I echo everything you're saying about the charter schools. But really, even if you had a public process and deliberated and all, everybody was involved, and you decided to go ahead and do that policy, what's also problematic is that it's just done with, so many of these decisions are without talking to the school board and without involving them. Really, in this case, obviously, we weren't consulted either. I mean, we get now weekly updates by email about the legislative updates, about what's going through. I've never seen anything in any of those emails about Senate Bill 68. I didn't know this. We have a legislative agenda where we deliberate and say things that we're interested in the legislate, we've never talked about this before. I've never heard privately or here at the Horseshoe talk about the city of Oklahoma City or Tulsa wanting the ability to issue charter schools. I've never heard that. So for the legislature to do that and then say, "Hey, isn't, this is going to be a game changer, and all the money's going to follow it and come to you," and not think that that's going to create conflict between us and the school board is just, is incredible. But it also is consistent with all the discussion about the TIF funds. And it is very clear that in our recent deliberations about TIF funds, that the school board really wasn't consulted to an adequate degree. And I wish if the legislature was really interested in saving schools, they would take a look at the incredible diversion of what's tens and hundreds of millions of dollars away from the schools and what impact that has on schools and what threshold they can... But those are discussions that we need to have with the school board in addition to the Senate Bill 68. I, final word on the convention center that David brought up. I don't, I really don't, I'm not understanding why we fault the property owners for, in an adversarial system advocating for as much money as they could get for their land. I mean, that's entirely predictable. And there, I was at a convention center subcommittee meeting more than a year, year and a half ago where Kirk Humphries said this. This day is going to come. Basically said, "If there's a problem, we should deal with it now." My concern about the process and the subcommittee is there's not, there seems to be squelching of that kind of questioning. And shortly after that, he left the subcommittee. But the, any of these, any of these lands, it's normal for the property owner to want to get as much land, as much money for their land as they can get. And I don't, I don't understand. The article this Sunday is very troublesome for Mr. Lackmire because it seems to imply that there's some kind of deal going on with all these public-private partnerships between the city and RICO, where we give all these TIF funds, we give all these deals, we, half of the 21(c)(2) is public dollars, and that seemingly that they should play ball or else they won't get, you know, these deals and these partnerships. It's very troubling that what's intimated by that, by that article. And it, it's not the way that we do things. We don't give tax dollars just because we expect a cheaper price on land. And the fact that they were approved for every TIF application until eight weeks ago, you know, kind of goes along with the same things that he's implying. The fact that we called it a friendly condemnation, which I've never understood what that means as opposed to a condemnation with the Brewers or anyone else. I wonder if at some point we take a step back and ask, "Do we have enough money to get to the next level, to the next tier of conventions? Do we have enough money with $280 million to get to the next tier?" Do we have enough money with 280 million to get to the next tier? And if we don't, with convention hotels saying it's going to cost 70 to 140 million dollars in subsidies with us, which forces us to do things like create a TIF within a TIF, to divert enormous amount of monies away from our public education, away from our schools to try and meet this shortfall before we get into any construction and any cost overruns. I wonder if part of this deliberation is, do we have enough money without having to find all these new revenue streams to get to the next tier? And if we don't, then maybe we just buy, build a very high-tech, very nice convention center for local and regional conventions and stay within budget and on time. Thanks.
Well, I have a lot of thoughts, but I think if I started spewing them, they wouldn't make any sense, so I'll say no.
All right. We have a couple of city manager reports.
Frank Barnes is here this morning to update us on our storm shelter program.
Good morning. Thank you for letting me speak to you. And I'm going to give you an update on our three storm shelter rebate programs that the city is currently managing or administering. The Oklahoma City Emergency Management is currently administering or managing two safe room or storm shelter rebate programs. One of those is funded with FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program dollars, and the other one is funded with a grant from the American Red Cross. We have a total of over $3 million in grants that we're handling, and our goal is to put in over 1,000, or put in 1,334 storm shelters. The planning department has a grant from the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program, and that grant is for a little over $1 million. And I'll talk more about each of these grants and these projects in more detail. I do want to mention that the programs that Oklahoma City Emergency Management is administering or managing would not be possible if it weren't for the collaborative effort of other city departments. We appreciate the assistance and support we have received from the City Clerk's Office, Development Services, the Finance Department, and Police Finance. The FEMA HMGP program actually began way back in 2011, when we started taking applications around Christmas of 2011. And we selected applicants and we vetted the applicants to meet federal regulations and we submitted an application by May of 2012. Unfortunately, there was no funding and the application was put on the shelf until funding became available. In July 2013, the program was funded as a result of the May 2013 disaster, which is commonly known as FEMA 4117. The program provides a rebate for 75% of the cost of a storm shelter not to exceed $2,000. And our goal is to put in 504 safe rooms. The grant was for a little over $1 million. The federal share is 756,000. The local match is 252,000. That local match is being provided by the homeowners. And the way that works is they have to pay for the storm shelter in full upfront before we can give them a rebate. The first phase of the program ran from October 2013 to December 2014. At that time, we still had 444 homeowners that were still in the program participating. As of February 28th, we had 377 of those 444 who obtained building permits. Of those 377 homeowners, 371 have submitted the rebate packets to us and they've been processed, and 369 claims have been paid in the amount of $730,627.61. Phase two is going to begin in 2015 and run into 2016. We need 133 homes to meet our goal of 504. We mailed out 700 letters back in November to homeowners that were still on our original list of applicants. We mailed out 700 letters, that was 100 per city council ward. There was one ward that had no, had no more applicants in it, we'd used them all up. So we mailed out 700 letters and we got 195 voluntary participation notices back. Of those 195 homeowners, they're currently going through the FEMA Environmental Historical Assessment, and we don't know how soon that will be done, but it's in progress. One of the things this slide illustrates though is that you have a significant dropout rate in any storm shelter rebate program, the longer you go. So you can see we mailed out 700 letters and we only got 195 replies. Our next program is the American Red Cross funded program. We initially submitted an application in February of 2014. The final application was submitted in June 2014 after some negotiations and conversations with the American Red Cross on the nature and structure of the program, and it was approved and funded in August of 2014. The grant amount is $2,075,000. This grant does not require a local match. The goal is to put in 830 storm shelters. The rebate is $2,500 maximum, not to exceed the cost of the storm shelter. One of the trends that has occurred between when we applied for the, or put, started working on the FEMA HMGP program in 2011 and 2014 is the amount of rebate, or the dollar amount of the rebate. Back in 2011, 2012, the going rate was $2,000, and by late 2013, 2014, the going rate was We sent out letters to 830 homeowners. We have received 674 voluntary participation notices so far. We did a second mailing to the people who had not yet responded, reminding them to get those turned in to us, and we even extended the deadline so that we could get, make sure that all 830 homeowners had ample time to return their voluntary participation notices. One of the phenomenons that occurred with this program is people very quickly went to installing storm shelters. We had 487 people who promptly went out and bought their building permits, which would indicate that they have made arrangements with somebody to put one in. 409 rebate packets have been processed so far. We've paid 323 claims for the amount of $801,482.27. When you compare the two programs side by side, you'll see that the American Red Cross program in a very short period of time, in four months, has essentially outperformed the FEMA HMGP program. One of the reasons for this is federal regulations. The American Red Cross program does not have to comply with extensive federal regulations, especially for environmental and historical preservation, and we're able to streamline it and move forward much more quickly with the program. We also had some lessons learned from the Hazard Mitigation Funded Grant Program, and we built on those lessons learned and again, did some things to help move the process along much faster. So already in four months, the American Red Cross program is 50% towards its goal, and in 15 months, the FEMA program made 75% progress, 74% progress towards its goal. As far as getting reimbursed for these two grants, last week, we received our first check from Oklahoma Department of Emergency Management and FEMA for reimbursing us for claims that we had paid up through December of last year. American Red Cross, we will make our first request reimbursement this month. We still have about $93,000 in reimbursement to request from FEMA, and this month in March, we'll be asking the American Red Cross for $801,482 of reimbursement. And the reason with the Red Cross, while we're just asking for reimbursement now, is there's a cycle as to how we do the reimbursement, and we were not, we did not start writing reimbursement checks till late December. And because of the bimonthly reporting, we didn't have any figures for them at the first of January, and March is our first opportunity to report to them on the amount of reimbursement we provided and then seek reimbursement for the claims that we've paid. So overall progress for these two programs, our goal was 1,334 storm shelters or safe rooms. We've got 778 that have been put in the ground or installed in somebody's home. So we're 59% progress to our overall goal. The FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program runs until July 2016, and the American Red Cross program will run until March 2016. So we still have about a year or more to reach our goal. The third program I'm going to talk briefly about is the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program. This is a project of the planning department. Bob Daley is the project manager. It too is funded as a result of the May 2013 disaster. What's different with the Community Development Block Grant Program versus the Red Cross and Hazard Mitigation Grant Program is that this program pays 100% of the cost of a storm shelter to be constructed or installed. So there's no out-of-pocket cost for the homeowner. They don't have to front any money, it's not a reimbursement program. Through this program, the city pays 100% of the cost. The goal is to put in about 235 storm shelters, give or take, because each storm shelter, some can cost more, some can cost less. So unlike the other programs, we had a fixed amount of rebate and we knew exactly how many we could do. This program, the variable is the actual cost of the storm shelters that the homeowner selects to have installed. And the program was launched in October. One of the differences also with the Community Development Block Grant Program is there is an income qualification, and you can see on the slide that there's a chart that shows the income qualification. This is the maximum income that the entire household can make and still remain eligible. So their income has, cannot exceed the amount you see on the chart. There's also extensive federal regulations because there are federal dollars involved. Once again, there has to be the Environmental Historical Preservation Assessment conducted on each individual property before the safe room can be installed. This is really a great program, obviously for people who have low to moderate incomes, but it's also great for people who are living on a fixed income, especially the elderly and people with disabilities. So, so far, they have mailed out, 737 applications have been mailed out based on requests that they have received from homeowners. They've gotten 109 applications back. As you can see, 49 have been approved, 30 are pending, five are waiting intake interview, and 25 were determined to be ineligible. Eight of those ineligible were in the 100-year flood plane. 13 were not even in the city of Oklahoma City, and three were over the income limits and one homeowner asked to cancel or withdraw. Of the 49 that have been approved, 34 have gone out to bid for a contractor to install the storm shelter or safe room. Of those 34, 25 have returned acceptable bids, and of that 25, 16 now have signed contracts between the city, the homeowner, and the contractor. And one storm shelter has been completed so far, and we have nine more bids to come in. One of the differences between the Community Development Block Grant Program and the others is the, it is a completely different program, different requirements that have to be met, it's a different process, and it takes longer and more time to get to the point that you're putting a storm shelter or safe room into the ground or into somebody's home or garage. As far as the status goes, the original grant was a little over $1 million. To date, they've committed $115,095. The projects out to bid are $35,950. The ones under contract amount to $76,045, and the one storm shelter that was completed and paid for was $3,100. The funds have to be expended within five years of the grant awarded, so this program can run until December 2018. So if you have constituents, people living in your wards that would fit this program, we still have time and still have an opportunity for people to apply. By the way, this is the only program of the three that is still accepting applications. The other two programs, the FEMA-funded and the Red Cross-funded, are not accepting applications. We already have extensive lists of homeowners who've applied for those programs that we can draw upon to fill any gaps. So again, this is the only program the city has that is currently accepting applications. Any questions?
Frank, how would one make that request for an application?
What's that?
How would one request an application?
They can call the planning department and they will mail out, send them an application.
Is it, is there a link on the website that we could put up and send people to?
I have to check on that. I think, I see Francis nodding her head.
What's it under? What, do you know?
I think it's on the front page, on the front page of OKC.gov. There was, in that center section, there was a heading about storm shelter or safe room giveaway. And I think it's in that center section and there's a link there.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other reports, Mr. Manager?
No, ma'am.
Great. Item 11 is, or item 13 actually, Citizens to Be Heard, and I believe we have a couple of folks that have signed up. William Gonzalez, as you're coming forward, as we always do, I'd request that you try to keep your remarks to three minutes, and Mr. Gonzalez, we'll need your name and address for the record.
William Gonzalez, 801 Caroline Drive, Yukon, Oklahoma. This is a question for the city manager. Are you familiar with the state statute 51-24A-8?
Not specifically.
Okay. I went over to the police department and asked for a copy of a police report. The law states that law enforcement agencies shall make available to the public inspection, if kept, the following records. Arrestees' description, including the name, date of birth, address, race, sex, physical description, occupation, facts concerning their arrest, including the cause of the arrest and the name of the arresting officer. A chronological list of incidents pertaining to the arrest, including the initial offense report. I asked for the initial offense report and they would not give it to me. The initial stop was by Lieutenant Pisano. They would not give me Lieutenant Pisano's record, or report. On the deal, and it says here, they marked out my, my birthdate and race, as if I don't know who I am or what my birthdate is, what my, they're avoiding deals. So I asked Joanne Porter if she knew what this state law states, and she goes, "Doesn't matter, we're going by what our records tell us to do." I said, "What do I got to do?" She goes, "You got to get a judge to come up and give you an order for us to do this," which means I have to get an attorney to file against the deal. So the city police do not want to give the stuff that's mandatory for them to do. I know you're not going to do anything in this because you didn't do anything on anything else I brought up. Vice Mayor, do you, does the mayor take an oath, a pledge when he takes the office?
We all do.
Okay, when he takes the office, he does an oath to say that he will uphold the city ordinances?
Correct.
Correct. I brought proof that city ordinances are not being met by your people. I called the state inspection guy, sent him the pictures and everything of those heat and air equipment installed. He says it doesn't need inspection, but I know you're not going to do anything about it.
Thank you for coming down, Mr. Gonzalez. Joe Sarge Nelson. Sarge, we'll need your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Joe Sarge Nelson. I've been down here quite a number of times, and if you'll excuse me a minute. I'm mainly down here today in reference to what's in blue, map's miscalculation. And of course, naturally, the city wasn't exception in such a large price difference. Well, I'm going to read this for what it's worth. Like I was here the last time, and like I told you then, I'll compliment you when you do good, and I'll bite you in the rear when I find out you're doing wrong. But I document everything I do. And it's like I said, I commend when necessary and bend those when the time calls for it. You ladies and gentlemen up there in the saddle are the leaders of this city. A interviewer elected from all parts of Oklahoma City and represent Oklahoma City, the mayor's the head. He keeps it in house process. Mr. Couch is the city manager, controls all of our vehicles, the departments, everything under city control, and despite popular opinion, he does a pretty fair job. And despite popular opinion, he does a pretty fair job. I like that smile. This is the first time I've seen a smile out of him since I've been coming here. And of course, Mr. Jordan, him and I speak quite often in the hall. I see him pretty regularly. He's a very benign guy. He keeps you guys on a legal route. I wrote a lot of this stuff, but I'm going to tell you right now, Oklahoma City, per se, has got so many departments, and every time we have a Tuesday election, we're putting somebody on a trust committee, or this committee, or that committee. Now, all you people up there are top businessmen, or have been. I read all this thing here. Let me stop here just a minute. You'll be sorely missed, Mr. Ryan. You really will. And in the stone cipher, the gentleman that's going to replace him, I do know the family of about 20 years. Congratulations on your reelection, and yours, and yours. But anyway, this miscalculation, this has been going on for years and years and years on this hotel and convention centers, along with the streetcar, which is another issue that I'll bring it up at a later time if it ever comes to the surface again. We don't need this stuff. Oklahoma City don't need to be in a motel business or hotel business or anything else. Now Cox Convention Center is my choice if we do anything. The building's already there. Make some adjustments to it, spend a little bit of money, and we're back in the ballpark with the same thing we're going before. Now, the lady things I gave her shows a blank million-dollar deal. You can, the 12 of you people up there can save the taxpayers this kind of money. Now, I don't know if any of y'all have seen the new police station. It's a beautiful place. I've seen it from the outside. I don't want to see it from the inside, except if I'm walking in like you all are. I know Mr. Seti and he's a fine police officer and police chief, so he'll do a good job. But anyway, this miscalculation thing is really disturbing me, and it does stagger my imagination. And the front-page story on March 4th really disturbed me. It says max miscalculation. All these high people we have in city government, planning, electrical, all these things, and they miscalculate the deal. And the fun part about it was this one right here. I think this is the most comical thing I've ever heard. City wasn't expecting such a large price. They've been dealing with this thing for two years. Now, my gripe is this, now I get down where I get dirty. You people knew ahead of time what the bid on that property was. The negotiations, back and forth, kicking about, and it's your all's responsibility. Those people out there come to you all to bring it to a head. And that man right there knows what's coming to a head. And the man that knew normally sits there, they're right across the hall from each other. They discuss all this stuff. And you people make the rules, the laws and everything, and I'm going to be honest with you, as far as our city charter rules are concerned, they're not worth the paper it's written on. There's more laws broken on the streets out there, and the police don't have any jurisdiction on them. We have some of the finest police officers in the world out here. I don't know if anybody saw the paper here just recently, Barack Obama, Captain Obama, Balderama's right in there, working with the city staff and everything. I admire what he's doing. I'll be here next week with a story I've already written on that one. We got some good police officers. We got a good thing. And this city has got so many high-tech people, a lawyer there. I read your resume. One stepping down, he keeps you in line. And this man here's probably got stacks of paperwork every day, one in the incoming basket. It's unbelievable. And he'll cut the bad parts out if you ain't careful.
Joe, three minutes.
Why don't you all go back to the five-minute thing we used to have?
Sorry?
Y'all used to have five minutes at one time some years back.
Well, it's three minutes now.
Okay, well, anyway, to make a long story short, what are y'all going to do about this issue? My deal is stay with the Cox Convention Center. You'll save the people some money, okay?
Thank you very much for coming down. We've got executive session, and then we're actually going to take a tour of the new police headquarters, which we're looking forward to.